Thank you, everybody. All right, item number one, approval of minutes, a regular meeting minutes of June ninth, 2020. Review and consideration of the regular meeting minutes of June ninth, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, I need a second.
A second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Chad?
Aye.
All right, all in favor, opposed? I hear none, thank you. All right, item number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter. Are we scheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one? I'm assuming, Anne, we don't have any public comments?
I did not receive any in my office, sir.
All right, Anne, thank you very much. All right, I'll close that off. Okay, item number three, old business, a rezoning case, RZ twenty dash zero 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 one. A request from Gregory K. Sites applicant and Michael G. Sites, property owner, to rezone two parcels from RR Rural Residential to C three Commercial Service Business. The two properties are, one, property one, the property is zero point nine seven acres and is located generally southeast of the intersection of North Bank Street and East Gordon Drive and is described as a portion of Lake Mohave County Club Estates, Unit Two, Block A, Lot eleven, APN three oh four dash oh four dash oh one six E. Property two is, the property is one point nine two acres and is located southeast of the intersection of North Bank Street and East Gordon Drive and is described as a portion of the Shangri-La State Second, amended, Block seven, lots thirty-one, thirty-two, APN three two zero dash oh two dash one six seven.
Good evening, Commission Chair and members of the Commission. This is Gary Likeness, I have a mask on, so you probably can't tell him talking through the video. As the Chair mentioned tonight, is the rezon of request for RZ twenty dash zero 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 one, rezoned from RR Rural Residential to C three Commercial Service Business District. And you might recall, this was, the applicant is Michael and Gregory Sites and the, this is the second hearing, and as I mentioned, you might remember, on March tenth, that is the last time we met on this matter. And the item was tabled in order to gather more information on the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District. But because it has been a period of time, I'll try to quickly go through some of these slides to refresh your memory on the site and some specifics. The vicinity is, is East Gordon Drive and Bank Street, the intersection there. And you can see on this aerial photo, property one and property two, two properties involved. And the surrounding land uses are generally office, commercial, vet clinic, residential to the east, to the south. And I think I've got it all there. There's some slides, site photos, looking west, the church, looking north, residential, looking east, looking south. And this is from site, this is the second site property two, looking southeast, in south. The current zoning for the, the area is RR Rural Residential for most of the properties, south of East Gordon there, except you do see in the middle, C three zoning, which is the commercial three, which is what the applicant is requesting to be rezoned to. The general plan that for twenty thirty has the properties designated as community commercial, which the rezon request to C three would be consistent with the general plan map. Utilities are in the area and accessible for the sites. And to get into, to show you the boundaries, this is the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District in yellow, so you can see how property two is completely enveloped or part of the Bank Street Overlay District. And then on the west side of Bank Street, property one is partially located in the overlay district. I will not go over these findings as we did before. Just that the property one is one acre and the property two is almost two acres. Property notification was, we properly noticed the site, published in the newspaper, sent property owners surrounding the property within three hundred feet, notice of the hearing. At the March tenth meeting, we did have Kingman resident Wes Maroney address the Commission and he stated that and acknowledged that the subject sites would be better as commercial development rather than residential and the commercial revenue could help bring income to the city. He noted that especially with the Kingman High School less than a block away, it would behoove the city to know what sort of business was being proposed for the properties. That's the only public comment we've received thus far on, on this case. No objection, objections were received from any department or agency. City engineering has two conditions of approval dealing with streets and, and site drainage. The Economic Development Department has sent a memo in support of the application and that's included in the staff report. Analysis for the site, is there a demonstrated need for the uses permitted in the zoning district? And this is from your staff report that I provided, C three zone offers a variety of, of commercial land uses and many of the corridors, many corridors such as the Bank Street corridor. I'm sorry, I can't even read my own slides here, sorry. My glasses. The C three zone offers a variety of commercial land uses, many corridors such as the North Street Bank and particularly the intersection of Gordon and North Street, North Bank Street, where the city is provided through the zoning potential. I can't read that, sorry, intensive commercial land uses providing a well-balanced mix of uses throughout the city. All uses permitted by right and by conditional use in the C one and C two districts are allowed in the C three zone as well as those allowed in this C three zoning district. If I can close this. Okay, suitability of the proposed zoning district with the compatibility and compatibility with the surrounding area. Properties are in an area of mixed uses. As was pointed out on the aerial photo, the C three zone maintains provisions that protect residentially zoned property such as screening of outdoor storage, masonry walls not less than six feet and no more than eight feet along a budding side or rear yard lines, rear, rear lot lines with developed residential districts. The conditional use permits that are allowed in the C three zone offer additional potential conditions of approval that will, that could increase the compatibility of such a use with the surrounding properties. Property two, as was mentioned, has an added layer of review through the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District. And those details are included in the staff report. And to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood and community and have consistent standards, the proposed condition of approval is that we apply the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District standards to all of property one. So that would make property one and property two subject to the design standards of the Bank Street Overlay District. The applicant, this was mentioned in the first hearing, looking at what are the concept plans that they might have submitted or, or have anticipated, and the applicant has submitted concept plans to conceptual plans, in fact, for both sites. These plans can change depending on what land use is going to be pursued. At this time, the applicant is contemplating multifamily dwelling units. The following information is based on the multifamily development standards of the C three zone in specifically with these sites, and that is property one with the density standards of the C three multifamily zone could have up to twenty-eight dwelling units and with twelve, twenty-eight dwelling units, the site would need to accommodate forty-two to fifty-six onsite parking spaces. Property two could develop up to fifty-four dwelling units and would therefore have to provide eighty-one to a hundred and eight parking spaces. This is the submitted site plan or a conceptual site plan for property one. And you can see, I pointed out the dwelling unit density, the site layout here. This would all need to be reviewed and approved by staff subject to the provisions of the zoning ordinance. These are just conceptual site plans. These are conceptual floor plans. This is site two, this is also a multifamily development proposal, conceptual plan. You can see the building locations, the, the common areas, the parking spaces, Gordon Drive, Bank Street. Potential building elevations. And the analysis continued with the Bank Street Overlay District, some examples of the standards that would apply to the two sites, especially if that condition is approved. Both sites would have this overlay district to review against and first part it would be site development standards and that would, and these are pulled from the, the ordinance. A project should have, should be developed to be compatible with the immediate environment of the site and the decent sensitive and be sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood. Also, a project should be designed to minimize interference with the privacy quiet and views of the neighbors. Project should be designed to minimize traffic problems. Standards for curb cuts, main driveway vehicles stacking sidewalks, landscaping, exterior lighting, transitions from street and buildings and open space standards. For buildings in the overlay district, buildings shall be compatible with the colors and textures of the surrounding environment. Warm earth tones, earth tone color shall be used such as rustic reds, green earth tones, tans and browns. Highly reflective materials that create glare shall not be used. Mechanical equipment shall be screened. Entryways, entryways shall not be flush with the building but shall be recessed or shall be covered with human scale overhangs, trellis or porch covers, et cetera. And finally, for buildings, storage or shipping containers as accessory uses may be used if completely screened inside a yard. Chailing fences with laths are not considered completely screened. Also, some design standards for signs, sign shall complement and reflect the architectural theme of the principal building. No, I've promised signs, billboards are permitted. Only building style signs are monument styles, styles freestyle, freestanding signs are permitted. I think I meant to say and in there on this slide, landscaping, pedestrian areas should be shaded with landscaping wherever possible and a coherent, logical landscaping design should be utilized. The screen and trash receptacle shall be screened and all utilities shall be placed underground. That was a brief overview of the Bank Street Overlay District, Design Review Overlay District. Finally, in, in conformance with the general plan mentioned earlier that the two properties are designated as community commercial, which allows them, which allows for zoning districts such as C three. Therefore, this request is in conformance with the general plan. Staff recommendation is that this is approved as a rezon from RR Rural Residential to C three Commercial Service Business District or business with the following conditions. Drainage, site improvements and finally property three, I mean, item three, property one, Lake Mohave Country Club Estates, Unit Two, Block A, Lot eleven, APN three oh four oh four zero one six E shall, as an added layer of development standards, adhere to all regulatory requirements of the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District as found in the City of Kingman zoning ordinance and any subsequent amendments thereto. Stand for questions.
None here.
All right, any, any, any Commission members have any questions of Gary? I hear none.
My microphone's not working right. Did they do a traffic study in the area for all of those units?
Not at this point.
Any other Commission members have any questions? All right, I hear none. Anne, is there any comments from the general public?
I did not receive any, sir.
All right, thank you, Anne, I'll close that off. Okay, I'll open up for discussion amongst the Commission members. I'm sorry, would the applicant like to speak?
No, that was a great presentation, Gary, at this time, I, I don't have anything to add to that, so very, very nice presentation, thank you.
I want to compliment you on, on your design overlay. I know there was a couple of Commission members that had some concerns at our last meeting and I appreciate you going out of your way with your conceptual plan ideas there, I thank you.
Yes, hello, one second.
Go ahead.
Yes, was I about to get left? I'm Evan Peiser with the Medical Marijuana Dispensary next to Bashes. Did I, wasn't, weren't we supposed to have some kind of conversation about my topic?
Well, that'll be coming up, Evan.
Just making sure I wasn't having everybody walk out of the room as I had everybody on.
That'll be coming up after this one, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
I was just gonna say, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for the compliment and, you know, we're honored to try to comply as best we can with our community. So glad that that helped out.
All right, any Commission members, any open up for discussion?
I have no questions.
Well, I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion?
No.
I hear none. And a roll.
Sheriff Frederiksen?
Approve.
Commissioner Cox?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
And Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Motion carries.
All right, Anne, thank you. Okay. On, let's see, new business for, for a zoning tax amendment case, Z zero two zero dash zero zero one. A request from Evan Peiser applicant for a tax amendment to the Kingman zoning ordinance in regards to medical marijuana regulations. The pro, pro, proposal is to expand the days that the dispenser varies can operate to seven days a week. Eliminate restriction on hours operation of dispensaries, allow drive, allow drive-through operations and eliminate the term medical marijuana in favor of the term marijuana to anticipate future changes to the law on this subject. Do you have a question, Gary?
Yeah. All righty, well, again, this is Gary Likeness. Chair, members of the Commission. Again, the applicant is Evan Peiser and this is a, the original request that Evan submitted was to make the following amendments to the zoning ordinance. And the Chair mentioned those, but I'll go over again. Remove the word medical from all instances in the zoning ordinance using the term medical marijuana. So it would just be, all references would be marijuana rather than medical marijuana. Number two, modify the days of the week that a medical marijuana dispensary can operate. This would allow dispensaries to operate all days of the week and currently Sundays are the only day a dispensary is not allowed to operate. Number three, eliminate restrictions on operational hours. Currently, the code allows a medical marijuana dispensary to operate from eight AM to six PM. And also, the request, original request was to allow medical marijuana dispensaries to have drive-through services. Findings of fact are provided in, in your staff report, we won't go over each one of these. But number three, the zoning ordinance, or I'm sorry, ordinance seventeen hundred B established standards for the operation of medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation in the C three I one and I two zones, so the C three and, and the two industrial zones. And the medical marijuana dispensary is allowed with the cultivation only in conjunction with the dispensary subject to certain conditions that are limited or that are specified in the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance refers to marijuana only in terms of medical marijuana, not recreational. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not allow medical marijuana dispensaries to operate on Sundays. Currently, the zoning ordinance allows medical marijuana dispensaries to operate between eight and six. The ordinance does not allow drive-through services for medical marijuana dispensaries. Recreational use of marijuana has not been approved by the federal government or nor the state of Arizona. Number ten, other communities that staff researched have not changed their codes to anticipate the use of recreational marijuana. And number eleven, other cities researched in the staff report generally allow medical marijuana dispensaries to be operational from eight AM until eight PM with some operating as late as ten PM. Published in the newspaper for public notification, no comments from the public had been received as of June eleventh, when the staff report was completed. However, on June twenty-second, yesterday, the applicant Evan Peiser provided staff with a list of people who had signed a petition in support of his request. His request as amended from the original request. The list includes a hundred and twenty-three signatories in support. The addresses listed in the petition may or may not be located within the City of Kingman, this has not been verified. The list has been sent to the P and Z Commission in an email today. As mentioned, the, the petition contains a hundred and twenty-three signatures. The petition requests the following, that the Commission and the Council allow marijuana dispensaries to extend their hours past six PM and that we request marijuana dispensaries be permitted to stay open Monday through Sunday until nine PM. And the reasons they stated in support of the change of hours and days of operation are, one, there's sufficient amount of time, there isn't sufficient amount of time for patients to leave their employment and drive to the marijuana dispensary to pick up their medication at the end of the workday. Number two, because of the dispensary closing at six, many patients are unable to place orders underway home from work. Number three, due to scheduling conflicts, many patients are required to make additional, additional trip on their day off request time off from their employer or have extended delays in picking up their medication. Funny, some patients have limited means of transportation and rely on caregivers or other transportation options like Uber. This costs residents an unnecessary increase of time and money. Again, that petition or support, letter of support is, has been emailed to the Commission. To go over this real quickly, we looked at removing the word medical from medical marijuana, as this was originally expressed interested from the applicant. The applicant has in originally suggested that this will prepare a code for a time when recreational use of marijuana is legalized by the state. However, the police department is opposed to this and it's presumptive and not yet allowed by the state federal government and that proposed change in just based on future circumstance. The department does state that if the status changes, then we can rename it. And that was the police department again. The purpose of the zoning ordinance is to implement standards for current development needs and not anticipatory changes in law. Twenty thirty general plan is only able to entertain current law even though it is a visioning document. Staff does not find that this requested change is appropriate at this time given the current laws regarding recreational use of marijuana. Extending the days of marijuana dispensary, the applicant has expressed that interest for seven days a week. And he has asserted by this, asserted that this change by the addition of Sunday will increase his business revenue, increase the city's taxes by eight to ten thousand dollars annually. Staff, including the police department, support this proposed code change. Extending the operating hours of medical marijuana. The original request was to eliminate the hours of operation from the code, which would allow all day dispensary hours. The amended request for the applicant has amended that and is requesting that the operational hours be extended only from eight AM to nine PM. The Economic Development Department and the Police Department recommended, recommend extending these operational hours an additional three hours to the nine PM amended request. Economic Development has stated that this will allow the, the applicant's medical marijuana dispensary business to have the same hours as the supermarket Bashes, which is in the same commercial plaza. For some comparison, the following slides show hours of operational, operation for medical marijuana dispensaries for other communities in Arizona. On the left, you have the cities that I've identified and went through their ordinance and found their operational hours and the median hours of operation are eight AM to eight PM with an average basically eight AM to eight PM as well. Most communities operate from eight AM to eight PM and I mentioned where that the latest hours of operation are ten PM and that's in Phoenix, Tucson and Glenville. And the earliest hours of operation are six AM as an outlier and because it's not a city for this study I put on the left here. Mohave County was not listed in this table. The county has no restrictions on hours or days of operation. Allowing drive-through services, the, is not supported by the police department. The police department stated, security measures on these businesses are purposely established to minimize theft and diversion. The drive-through would compromise security measures. Conformance with the general plan, I've stated here that objectives that are within the com, the general plan twenty thirty, it's with the tax change, it's part of the consideration is that it adhere to the general plan and that it will achieve the goals and objectives of that adopted general plan. So I've listed a couple of objectives here that I, I think will suit this proposal well. And that is objective one, promote Kingman as a place to live, be employed, become educated and to locate a business. Objective three, encourage compatible mix of land uses which allows accessibility to goods and services without extensive travel. Because the original request has narrowed through the staffs, through staff's recommendations would allow extended days and hours of operation for dispensaries and because the land use allows citizens local access to And because the land use allows citizens local access to service, it is in performance with the general plan. Recommendation, staff recommends that the zoning ordinance be amended. Only as far as conditioned here, and that is. Do not remove the word medical from all instances of in the zoning ordinance using the term medical marijuana. Two, to modify the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensaries to operate every day of the week, rather than what is currently allowed Monday through Saturday. Number three, modify the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensaries to operate from the hours of eight AM to nine PM. An increase of three hours in the evening from what is currently allowed. Four, do not modify the zoning ordinance to allow drive-through services. With that, I stand for questions.
I have one question.
Members have any questions of Gary or staff?
Yes. What other business in England have restricted hours besides the wash me car wash?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
What other businesses in Kingman besides the wash me car wash have restricted hours?
Oh, which other businesses?
Yeah, you have the, the marijuana facility and the car wash have restricted hours. And I'm trying to find out if there's any other businesses that do.
Richard, are you aware?
Um, there may be, I, I don't know if there's any there restricted by. City initial uses or, or other. Items, we'd have to research that. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Cause I remember when wash me car wash came in, they were restricted to the hours of operation.
Yeah, I think there are some conditional uses in, in, they're, they're in operation now that have restricted hours. But I can't point, point, point them out right, right here off the top of my head unless I did a little research.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other commission members have any questions of Gary or staff?
Hey Gary, what's uh? What's the benefit of item one on your staff recommendation not removing the word medical? In the zoning ordinance?
Um, it, it could have roots in the, in the original adoption of the, the state approving medical marijuana and. The city, I think as a whole, did not vote for that. And but, but because the state allowed it, this, the city approved a local ordinance that would allow medical marijuana to be allowed within the city limits, subject to conditions. And so I think it's, it's heritage language that makes it clear that it's medical marijuana that we're providing for the community, not recreational. That would be my understanding.
Is that something that the city attorney reviewed and made a suggestion on or is?
Uh, no, staff is only recommending that remain the same.
I just don't follow, I don't understand the benefit of. Making sure that medical is. In the text.
It's already located in the text, the staff is only recommending that it remain there.
I do have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
Let me finish up the questions here. Scott? You have any questions of staff?
I have a question to the applicant when you're finished, thank you.
Alright. Any further questions of staff, anybody?
Yeah, I guess my other question. The, the whole presentation was about amending. You know, the tax amendment, but it sounds like it's in relation to only one store that's near the bashes, is that correct?
That's the, the applicant is the owner of that store and economic development did point out that it would accommodate bashes hours as well. But it is a citywide, you're right, it's a citywide text amendment.
Any further questions? And was there any, was there any? General comment from the public on this?
I did not receive any additional public comments other than what was provided to the commission on the signature sheets from the development services.
Alright, and thank you. Would the applicant like to? Speak or make any comments? Even? Evan? Evan, are you there? God, it seems we've lost Evan.
Well, then I'll just ask this question in general, if you don't mind is. Is why, why the, why the push to remove the word medical?
Could I mention that the applicant did essentially amend or is amenable to not having pushed that? So they're, they're okay with medical marijuana remaining.
Okay, as long as, as long as it remains, thank you.
Alright Scott, we'll note that, that. Asked of Evan, I don't know what happened with Evan, so. I'll close that off and then I'll open it up for discussion amongst those commission members. I do want it noted, though, that we did reach out to Evan. Evan was on here and somehow we lost him. In the last few minutes, so please be noted. And any commission members, you got any opening up for discussion?
Well, I, um, I agree with the staff recommendations to go ahead and extend the hours. No drive-through and leave medical marijuana dispensaries, you know, in the title. So I, I, I think it all looks good.
I agree with you there Terry, my only. My only thought was. Making it at eight PM. Time closing instead of the nine. The general consensus from reading in the report, but that's only, that's just my opinion, so. Yeah, Scott?
I agree with the nine PM because bashes right next door, they're open till nine. So, you know, that way they can still, you know, have the traffic, you know, in the shopping center.
Just an observation, if you will, that the argument that they're losing business to a county business because they're not open. For me, doesn't hold much weight in the fact that other businesses that are restricted are under the same guideline. That if they're forced to close early, people have to seek other opportunities to buy whatever product that might be. So if you're going to change it for one, you need to change it for everybody, in my opinion.
Duly noted. Jared or Chris, you any comment?
Nah, I'm good with it, just the way it is with the staff recommendations, that looks real good.
Thank you. Well, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
As.
Our staff recommendations.
I have a motion, I need a second.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Alright, Anne, roll call vote please.
Sheriff Frederickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Cox?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Anne. Alright, item B, rezoning case, RZ twenty dash zero 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 three. A request from Jeremiah Divas, applicant and five-star partners LLC property owner to rezone certain property. From I one white industry to I two heavy duty, heavy industry. The area of the property that is subject to the rezoning is approximately two point seven acres and is located at thirty-eight eighty East Andy Divine Avenue. The property is further described as a portion of the northwest quarter section of four. T twenty-one N, R sixteen W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona. APN three twenty-two dash oh five dash oh eight and the APN three twenty-two dash oh five dash oh twenty-seven. Gary, are you handling this one?
Yeah.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have to disclose that I have an ongoing business relationship with the applicant. I don't feel that I would gain anything by either opposing or voting in the favor of this request. But I just need to disclose that I do have a business relationship with them.
Alright, thank you, Mister Scott McCoy, as duly noted. I have no objections.
Maybe it's the middle one, Gary. Oh, maybe you didn't have it up there, huh?
I apologize for this. Might have gotten saved over. Okay, thank you for your patience, apologize for that. This is again case, rezoned case, RZ twenty dash zero 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 three. A request to rezone from I one light industry, industry to I two heavy in industry. The applicant is our, and property owner of five-star partners LLC owner and Jeremy, Jeremiah Divas as applicant. The vicinity map here shows you the property is outlined in red, but I also put a star there because they're a little zoomed out. But you can see. Route sixty-six, Andy Divine and North Castle Rock and East Gordon Drive just south of there. And if you can tell, there's a bold black line, the property is right adjacent to the city boundaries. And so the property to the north is within the county. We took some property site photos while we were out there posting a sign for public notification. And here on the left is looking south at the property. And lower right is looking west at the property. Post our notice and then here again is looking west. Some of the uses and buildings, this is again industrial use. Here's the current zoning map. Highlighted in red is the area that the applicant is. Uh, wishing to rezone from I one to I two. It's hard to see, but again, there's, there's two parcels involved here. Three two two. Oh five oh two seven in the dark area to the south. It actually is, has two zones on it, I two and I one. And then three, the parcel number three two two oh five oh two eight. Is currently zoned I one entirely. Here's a image of the general plan map. The box, red box again is the subject property. And the star is, is also there. You can see that the area between Andy Divine and the dark black on the southwest or right side. Is their railroad, so the, we have on the general plan, we have. Industrial designation between Andy Divine and, and the road tracks. To, and I'll mention that later, but it's buffered for the residential uses. To the upper left, you can see we have across Andy Divine, we have community of commercial designation. And to the east, we have medium density residential and a pocket of public quasi. Public slash quasi-public land use designation. The aerial photo and utility map shows that the area is serviced by water. But the sanitary sewer is biseptic system and that's for the general area as well. There's a little fine print, it seems. The property sizes are. There's two parcels of land that comprise six acres and only two point seven acres are being requested in this rezone. Again, the existing zoning is I one and I two. For one of the parcels and I one for one of the parcels. The idea is to get it all rezoned to I two, so that it's appropriate for the uses that are currently there. The general plan, both properties are designated as manufacturing industrial. The zoning and development history, I won't go over that. The physical characteristics aside is, is developed and in use. Land is generally flat, property lies outside of the floodplain. Public utilities, I mentioned, water is accessible there and transportation is from Andy Divine. That was posted on June fourth, notice in the paper, June seventh, and we sent. Notice to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. And no comments from public agencies, from the public or agencies have been received regarding this request as of today. The demonstrated need for the use permitted in this, in promote, in the proposed zoning district. The property operates as an automobile scrap metal fibers and plastic recycler. The use is existing and not entirely different from the other businesses in the vicinity. The presence of other similar business represents the need for these auto and scrap metal land uses in the community. The suitability of the proposed zoning district and compatibility with the surrounding area and community. The property is surrounded by industrial land uses and industrial zoning and the location is isolated, as I mentioned. It's isolated from residential and light commercial areas because of its location between Andy Divine and railroad tracks. Conformance with the general plan, mentioned that manufacturing industrial is a desert, is the designation for that area. And that supports the I two request, I two industry, industry, like heavy industry. And based on the findings and. That the application conforms to the goals and objectives of the general plan. As we view and finds a fact contained in this report, planning staff recommends approval of a rezoning from I one light industry to I two heavy. I one light industry to I two heavy industry. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Any commission members have any questions of staff? I see none. As of this time, I'm assuming Anne, we still have no comments from the general public?
No, sir.
Thank you, Anne. I'll close that general comment, public comment off and open it up questions or discussions to amongst us commission members.
I have no questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCoy.
I don't have any comments.
You have a comment, you said no comment?
No comment.
Thank you. All right, then I need a motion on this.
Make a motion to approve RZ twenty dash zero 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 three as recommended by staff.
I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? I hear none. Roll call, please, Anne.
Chair Fredrickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Cox?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
And Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Anne.
Chairperson Fredrickson?
Yes.
Mr. Pizer is trying to get back into the meeting. I'm going to admit him. I just wanted to let you know in case you wanted to give him an opportunity to speak.
It's, it's, it's closed off, Anne. So let, let Evan know at this time that we get, we gave him the opportunity. He was there as duly noted. So thank you, Anne. Item C, the planning and zoning commission meeting time change at the direction of city manager Ron Fogan. The start time for all city boards and commissions is being changed to five PM. The purpose of the change would be to create uniform meeting times for all city commissioners that are in line with the city council's meeting time of five PM. And item number five, announcement by commission members, limited to announcements, availability or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Any comments or questions from any commission members?
Can we comment about the time change?
Yes, you may.
That's going to be really hard for some of us that work till five o'clock, to be there at five o'clock.
All right, that's duly noted. Thank you.
Chairperson, if I may?
Go ahead, Anne.
Just for a point of clarification, I wanted to let the commission members know that it is not all commissions that are changing to five o'clock. It is for the evening commissions that meet. So there will still be some commissions that meet during the daytime. So Mr. Fogan just wanted to make sure that I let you know that.
But this does affect P and Z?
Yes. All right, thank you. Item, that is, I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.